Everybody, it's nine o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Hey, Bert.
Alright, we'll start. We've got a devotion from District Five this morning.
Yeah, and I'm gonna have to divert the devotion until about nine thirty, if that's okay with the board. My pastor's running a little bit late, and so he's on his way from Ocean Springs. But I told him we'd give him time when he gets here to do the devotion for us, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah, we may need more prayer by that point anyway.
I see. Might be good. You never know. There you go.
Alright, so we'll go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, and we've got a good bit of presentations this morning. First thing we've got is a SNPDD County Services Report. Mr. Leonard Vince.
Thank you, Mr. Prince, members of the board. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you today and tell you about what SNPDD does for the citizens of Jackson County through y'all's participation. Everybody should have, Josh, did you get one? I think I made sure and put one.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Everybody should have received one of these in their desk. As you can see in FY twenty-three, remember this is FY twenty-three, or it'll be FY twenty-four next year. In twenty-three, the county's contribution of a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars resulted in almost four point two million dollars in goods and services provided to the citizens of Jackson County. I'd say that's probably a pretty good return on your investment. I'm not a financial advisor, but I'd say that's a pretty darn good return on your investment. You can see over fifty-two thousand home-delivered meals, six hundred and thirty-one workforce program participants, two hundred and a quarter million dollars in two business loans, a hundred and eighty-five jobs created or retained by the already twenty-two active business loans we have in Jackson County, and five thousand dollars to deserving students for scholarships provided to the junior community colleges, more specifically Mississippi Gulf Coast here in Jackson County. You know, we've been partners probably, I guess, over fifty years, and not only are we coming to show you what your investment in our organization provides, but we're also here to say thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to get to be partners with Jackson County. And we have our staff here today. They're all in the back. Back here, we've got Kristen Gunner. She's Division Director of Special Projects. Madeline Walker, who is the Division Director of Senior Services. Tanya Coyne, Assistant Division Director in the Senior Services Division. Penny Patterson, who's Project Manager in Economic Workforce Development. Jeffrey Nicholson, who is our Financial Advisor for Municipal Advisors of Mississippi. And Jennifer Bell, our CFO, our new CFO that we have at SNPDD. And then Ashley Briscoe, who is our Marketing Manager, and she kinda handles the scholarship presentations and stuff such as that. So, did I miss anybody? Always like to say, we could not do the job that we would, that we do, or I couldn't do the job that I get to do if it weren't for the support of the team that we have. I say they're a lot smarter than I am, and they're much better looking than myself and Jeffrey back there in the back. So, we're here to answer any questions that you might have. And I don't know if any of our directors had anything that they'd like to touch on regarding any of the issues we have in Jackson County. But I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Real quick, SNPDD still administering that road study program, right?
We are.
Okay, and would y'all do that for other PDDs if it was in there, if it was in another area of the state? Or would it have to go through them?
Well, we, i- i- if they have the capacity to be able to do it, then obviously we'd let our fellow PDDs do that. If they don't, then we would come in and, with an agreement with them, we tend to not get in their districts if they provide a service in which we provide. On the municipal advisors, the bond financial advisors, we do that statewide. And, you know, I tell y'all every year about that. We'd love an opportunity to talk to Jackson County. We've just been harping on a county for about the last seven years. They finally gave us an opportunity. And just by us putting numbers on a piece of paper, we saved that specific county over a quarter of a million dollars. And that's real money. I'm not talking a thousand, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, five thousand. I'm talking real money that we're able to save our counties by just providing those services to them. So, good thing about that business, it's not profit-driven, it's service-driven. It is a full-profit entity, but it's more service-driven than profit.
We had some folks at one of the MAS meetings where we had a roundtable where I was on the board.
Yeah.
And they asked about different things for roads, and I pitched the road study program to them, and they weren't in our district. So I said, I don't know how that would work, but I'm sure they would be willing to help y'all figure it out.
Yeah, Kristen would love an opportunity to go visit with them, and I'm not familiar with another PDD that does the road studies. Are you, Kristen?
Golden Triangle does some, can, some road study that's a little bit different than the partnership that we have with our engineering firms that we work with.
And a quick, a quick on, I'll toot the horn for SNPDD too and say, you know, one of my pet peeves with government or any big agency is you call and you get somebody on the phone, and they say, we don't do that.
Yeah.
Well, I've always said, if you don't do that, it's your job when you inherit that call to figure out who does that and help them find somebody. And SNPDD is one of those agencies where you call them with something off the wall, they will help figure out who it is that needs to come do that and make the decision and figure out how to help that person. You don't hand off problems and say, hey, we don't do that. You try to figure out who it is.
I see.
And they definitely do that. That's the leadership that causes that mentality to go throughout the agency.
Yeah, well, you know, our team knows that the answer is never know. It's always, let's figure it out and see how we can get it done. And most of the time, we do figure a way. There are times, you know, that we just hit a roadblock and we're not able to move forward on it. But I'd like to thank my bosses and my board members, Mr. Enid Morris and Mr. Troy Ross. And I'd like to thank Mr. Bossard for serving on our Workforce Board there with Southern Mississippi Planning and Development District. So, you have any que- yes, sir, Brian?
At revision.
The thing you were gonna ask. You wanna come up, Kristen? This is Kristen Gunner. She's our Special Projects Division Director. She's kinda the utility player for us at the PDD.
So, our, on the updated forms, we submitted the draft work maps and the intermediate data supplemental number five to FEMA in March. We've had some good conversations with headquarters and with the region, where we have, we've developed, or continue to develop a good partnership with them. The review team is currently working through some additional modeling at the Riverine tie-ins, but we hope to have that back to them within the next few weeks. We're getting on a call with them soon. And then hope to start preparing the preliminary maps later this year. Where we'll, those will all get submitted. We've got about four hundred panels to create, and those will go back up to FEMA. I think we've got about five quality reviews. Once those get up there, and then we really start into the true regulatory timeline with FEMA to get to authorize and approve maps.
Any idea when that will be, approved maps?
Yeah.
I mean, we've been talking about this for a while.
It's gonna be probably about at least a year and a half, and that is because we have certain, we have a hundred and eighty-day required appeal periods. We have certain dead times that are statutorily included because they become regulatory products, so we have to follow the federal requirements from the time of preliminary to effective maps. But the counties, the cities can always, like we did after Patrino, you can accept the preliminary map before they become effective and start building to those should you want to. And those are conversations that we'll have with the communities and the region.
And Brian, I need to expand on that because there's nothing more aggravating to me than waiting. I can't, and I'm an impatient type person, but I do have to tell you this. It would be longer than that if it weren't for Congressman Nizel in our congressional delegation. I mean, he questioned the Director of FEMA, NFIP.
We dropped, when we turned everything in on Monday, March eleventh, the Congressman had a hearing with Administrator Cresswell on that Tuesday. And within, within about three weeks, we were on the phone with some high-level folks at headquarters in the region moving things forward.
That we think probably saved us eighteen months, maybe?
It, it was, we had hit some roadblocks on communication, and he absolutely opened the doors on those.
You say Congressman Nizel. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright.
Any other questions?
I think I'm good.
No, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, is actually, you've been...
Oh. We've got, we've got two scholarships to present now.
Yes, yes, you do. And I'd like to touch on something on the scholarships, just so the people and your citizens will know that the funds that are provided to these kids are not county funds. They're program income from Southern Mississippi Planning and Development District. The Board of Directors was kind enough to give us the endowment of over three hundred thousand dollars, I know, six, seven years ago. And, and we've been able to provide well over three hundred thousand dollars in scholarships to students within our fifteen-county area of service territory, so. I'll get out of the way.
Alright, yeah.
Thank y'all very much. Appreciate it.
We'll go, we'll go forward and present the scholarships. And one of, Robert Tinson Jr. is in recognition of outstanding achievement, and I think he's going to, well, he's going to attend Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College. These are both from Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College. Robert Tinson and Olivia Grace Ram Samer, Ram Samer. Tell me how close or how bad that was that I found that last one.
I'll settle.
Close enough?
We have to go to George County's presentation, so we're gonna head on out.
It seems like every, every, every meeting, we have a thirty-plus-year retirement, so we've got another one today. Mary Ann Fokhout, there she is. There you are. Thirty years and eight months.
Just wanna make sure she's every day.
Eight months and twenty-two days, or how many days? Since being hired more than thirty years ago, Mary Ann has held positions within the Tax Assessor's Office. Mary Ann has always represented the county with an exemplary level of professionalism and dedication. As a mapping technician, she's worked for the Assessor's Mapping and Home Stave Department her entire career. Mary Ann has long been known as the go-to for mapping and these questions about the public, as well as other employees of the county. Her knowledge of Jackson County law, of law, land, and procedure will be greatly missed. Her dedication, attention to detail, quality of work, and depth of knowledge will be remembered and appreciated by those that she has had the privilege to work with her over the years. The board is grateful to Mary Ann and for her loyalty and the service to Jackson County over the years, and wish her the best in all her future endeavors. Thank you.
Alright, that brings to amendments to the agenda. Mr. Cumbest?
I don't have any.
Mr. Morris?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Taylor?
I have none.
I don't have any. Mr. Bossard?
None.
Chancery Clerk?
Administrator?
No.
Road Manager?
None.
Board Attorney?
Just one.
Of course.
State of Health System Strategic Discussions.
You can always count on a lawyer to have an amendment. Others? Any other amendments to the agenda?
I have one.
Okay.
Under my items, at item G, I've already printed out, is where the Go Masonic Cement Bulkhead Repair Renovation Project.
Okay. Alright, any other amendments to the agenda? Alright, do we have a motion except the amendments as presented? Motion by Mr. Cumbest, a second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to general public comment. Do we have anybody here for general public comment?
Yeah, I got some questions on the Beachview Road Project. I know it's on the agenda today. I just wondering a timeframe as to, as to how long we're talking from start to completion, being Phase One, and how long is we're gonna be on Phase Two? I just wondering on the easements, the width of the road, how close are we gonna be to the houses? How much, how much room of the property owners gonna have from the road and the sidewalk to their front door? How much parking? Because on the front end of Beachview, those driveways are pretty short. You know, a lot of them have kind of a circle driveway they can get in and out. And if it's going telephone telephone pole, that looks kind of, kind of short span there, where we may end up with, with more trouble than we got now trying to get in and out of there. You can't back out on the front end of Beachview. You have to pull out. And on the, on the design of the road, I'm wondering the weight capacity. Because if this proposed RV park does go through, and I really don't think that it will, what's the load limit on this? I mean, is it going to be built hefty enough that it doesn't have to be rebuilt in another five to six years? You know, we have garbage trucks down through there. We have construction vehicles. They're still doing, you know, building houses and all down through there. And that's a lot of weight. We have semis rolling down through, so we'll make sure that, that anything that you build is capable of holding that. I was also wondering about the, the bridge down there, because on a regular basis, I see construction vehicles, a loaded dump truck weighs way more than a school bus ever thought about weighing. Yet I see all this heavy traffic across that bridge, and that bridge is not rated for that. And I bring this up because I'm from Arkansas originally. And I don't know if y'all saw it online or on, on the internet. This past weekend, Arkansas had a bridge that collapsed. It was, had been shut, and this was not a county road. This was a state road. Was shut down because engineers had found it to be weak. They had just started the remediation, and the bridge over the San Francis River, Highway forty-two, crossing county, which is southeast of Memphis, completely collapsed. And I sure don't want that happening to our bridge. I don't want a heavy truck going across that, and then, you know, weakening it, and then one of us comes along behind that, and that bridge goes, puts what we're on it. I mean, that would not be a good thing. And when you start the construction on Beachview, how do you plan on rerouting the traffic? Because if you go down Hinshaw, and you go straight through the red light there on Old Spanish Trail, that road is, is, the first part is, is okay, but when you get on down, it's a little narrow. And any road you turn off to get back to Beachview is narrower than Beachview or that road. And the corners, if you're in a large vehicle, say, dump truck, semi, or whatever, there's not room to swing, to turn, without your trailer going off in the ditch. Case in point, we had a RV, someone taking a RV out about a month ago, found that out the hard way. They put their rear end in the ditch. And if, if you're rerouting around that, and you've got people coming and going, large vehicles can't swing around if someone is at a stop sign to prevent them left to come into town. So how do y'all plan on addressing that? There's something else I was gonna ask you, but now I don't remember what it was. But, oh, I don't have a comment for it. You're planning on putting three lanes down through there? And I'm gonna tell you right now, that's not gonna do anything. That's not going to aid anything. It's not going to affect anything, except make a lot of property owners mad because now they've got the traffic closer to their houses. We have a huge problem now, Mr. Bossard can attest to this, and I can't too because I'm retired law enforcement as well. This is the only state I've ever been in, and as retired military, I've been all over the world and all over this country. I've never seen a state that doesn't allow county to run radar. To me, that is just ludicrous. On Friday and Saturday night and during the day, especially Friday and Saturday night, we have the kids from Ocean Springs that like to use Beachview as their personal racetrack. When I say personal racetrack, I do mean that. I mean fifty to sixty mile an hour down that road. And it is not well-lit, which I hope is addressed if y'all do any widening down through there or any remediation. During the day, early morning hours, people go into work. They don't leave in time, especially ones going to, for, you know, coming from Ocean Springs to Ingalls or Ocean Springs to the casinos, what have you, downtown Biloxi. They're doing fifty mile an hour down through there. The only thing adding a third lane to do is going to encourage people to speed more. And if someone is turning or someone going slow, to use that middle lane as a passing lane. You know, I'm an old man. I'm sixty years old. Soon to be sixty-one. I've been driving since I was eighteen. So I've been driving a minute, like most of y'all. And I know y'all have seen that. I've seen it many, many times in Arkansas, in California, in Iowa, in Kansas, in Oklahoma, in Nebraska, in Texas, in Florida, North Carolina, South Carolina, Tennessee, Kentucky, all the places where I have been. And so how are y'all planning on addressing that? Because the way I see it, the only thing you're gonna do is get someone killed or someone injured. And then I'm gonna be back up here complaining to y'all again. So how do y'all plan on addressing that? Because it's this board that's got to... You know, y'all are, y'all are the ones saying, oh, we're gonna do this, or we're not. You're stewards of the county's money. Which county's money is our money, okay? So we expect things to be done correctly. We expect to be done, things done with a lot of thought and not frivolously. Not, oh, well, we should have done this different, should have done this different. It's gotta be planned, as we say in the military, planning and execution. You gotta plan way, way before you do the execution. And I'm not, I'm just wondering if y'all are not putting the cart for the horse on, on doing this project. And, and you all do...
We have a lot of questions wrapped into that, but I think a lot of them could be addressed if we get you up with the Road Department, because they're gonna have plans, and they're gonna have drawings where you can see how much right-of-way and wherever right-of-way changes and how far it goes into a yard. So that will address all of those things, but you need to be able to look at it because sitting here and talking through it, we'll all be confused.
I have seen some of it, and it raises, to me, it raises more questions than answers.
And then you have every right to submit ideas to, whether it's the Road Department or to this board or to anyone involved in this project, as to what you think would work better. And then they can look at it and see if it would help them or not. As far as the, the speeding, the downside I've, I've seen over the years to paving a road and making a road wider and making it safer and better is it promotes more speeding. And then, and then a place where unincorporated areas can't run radar, it makes it very, a very tough thing to, to police or deal with. We have actually presented bills for local private agreements where Jackson County could get the right to run radar probably ten, at least ten times since I've been on this board. It goes to legislature, it goes to the local private committee, and they usually don't act on it. For whatever reason, that doesn't get acted on. I, I don't really know the details, but we've tried to make it specific to where it was only for Jackson County. And in areas like Gulf Park Estates, Saint Martin, they were actually developed rural areas. Because we're unique in the fact that most rural places in the state don't have city, city living with sidewalks and roads the way we do.
You got half the population living down here. But I got a question for you. Have y'all thought about, because I know y'all have social media. Have y'all, have y'all considered enlisting the public in order to help get that happen? Where the, putting out the information to where we, as the general public, make it simple. Hey, this is who you need to call. This is what we need, where we can back y'all up in calling or texting or emailing the powers that be in Jackson.
If we can, we could submit a resolution supporting something like that again, and we can let everybody know what bill number it's gonna be, and then people can help us and support it. And we can make it specific so that maybe it only applies to the parts of Jackson County that are actually populated, like maybe Van Cleve, Saint Martin, Gulf Park Estates, those type areas. And that would be, that would be something that it might, would help. I mean, it might work. The only way we'll find out would be to try it and see if it does anything.
We've got a huge coalition, about seventeen hundred of us, so. That, that, that could speak volumes.
Yeah, I have no problem with working something with our board attorney and coming up with a resolution again.
Everyone that calls me about radar, that's the first thing I tell them, is that the legislators have to enact the law. I don't enact the law. They have to. And they're on, you go to the Mississippi Legislature's website, every legislator and their phone number and the district they represent and their address is on that website. And then you look at Jackson County, you get all the representatives and the senators, their names and numbers, and feel free to call them. On our behalf, we would love that. We would love more citizens to be involved in that and putting pressure on them to enact a radar bill for us.
I'll put all the pressure out.
Please do. I, I encourage you to do that, for sure.
Hi, my name is Adam Maheden. I know that this road, the project for this road was designed before the proposed RV park was put in place. Like, these plans had been in there for a long time. My question is, from an engineering perspective of the road, in terms of, was, when, when the road construction company and the engineers were thinking about the type of traffic involved, the volume of the traffic, what's the road's intended purpose? I don't think they were factoring in possibly that the RV park could actually be in Gulf Park Estates. Some people say it'll be in there. Some people won't. Say, that's, that's, that's all in flux right now. But let's suppose that the RV park does end up passing in Gulf Park Estates. Is, I don't think that this road is engineered in a way for this type of traffic. Whatever calculations were assumed, were assumed more for car traffic and pedestrian traffic and that sort of thing. I don't think it was designed or engineered in a specific way to be robustitized for, you know, potential RV commercial traffic and the volume of traffic on the road. So, this raises the question, you know, if the RV park is proposed, but these plans were, and it does end up prevailing, and then we have this road project which was not designed, it was not working perhaps with the RV park to begin with, then we have what we call a dynamic mismatch, because you have one type of traffic, then you have a road that is being designed that could take years, that is not designed for the, for, for the conditions it's supposed to meet. So, it just seems, how do we solve that issue altogether? Do we, do we need to, like, take the road and, do the, does the road engineer and the road company need to go back and see if they can make an amendment to the, to the plan? And see, like, could they, could they design... And see like, could they, could they design it in a way that's actually more robust in the in the possible case that the RV park does win in the Supreme Court or or anywhere else? So how do we address that?
Joe, is this, what's the weight limit on this road?
It's gonna be fifty-seven, six fifty, which is the standard weight on all roads. It's gonna be constructed to state age standards, written in books. And they look at the traffic count and future traffic counts.
Was that when the RV park proposed?
While they're developing.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but the heaviest vehicle that goes down that road ninety percent of the time is gonna be a loaded garbage truck. The garbage truck loaded is around twenty-five to thirty tons, which is gonna be right at that requirement. And I just looked up a Class A RV, and it's about fifteen tons on the high end. So you're ten tons lower than a garbage truck.
But we don't have five hundred garbage trucks. We don't have like two hundred fifty, three hundred garbage trucks going up and down the road today. Or that's that's the, while in theory, the maximum weight is not exceeded based on the volume of traffic eventually.
That's looked at, it's all looked at. And here sitting here, I'm sure he'd come up and answer any questions if y'all wanna get into it.
Average change, you know, when you go from a two lane to a three three lane, what is the percent increase in traffic flow? Capacity wise? Do you know that off the top of your head, whoever, the engineer or? Going from two to three?
We're not increasing capacity, we're providing less than currently. So that's provided a safer access to the unwanted property.
Right, it'll it'll make it where you don't have to stop too when someone's turning left and wait for the traffic to clear, because they're backing it up.
Are you saying you're not increasing the, so is there any difference in, was this considered with like possible future increases in traffic, whether that RV park is passed or not? Like, I just think that's important. Is that considered in the design calculations?
The design calculation do include a growth factor.
Okay.
The volumes of traffic, so we're not gonna pay the designers.
And so that was for this commercial entity in 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 this this day? Okay, all right.
So fifty-seven, fifty-seven thousand tons, fifteen tons ain't gonna hurt a fifty-seven thousand pound road, even if you run over it every five minutes. Okay.
Okay, and also from a safety perspective, if if the RV park is proposed, does this, do you think, I'm asking the engineer, is this road designed? Is it in the engineering department's calculations that this is actually a safe road for for pedestrians, for the RVs? Like, is that, was that all factored into like whether this meets? Because they said on one hand that the road project did not have nothing to do with the RV park, but it kinda seems like it probably should at least factor very seriously in, because the odds are prevailing. Who knows what's gonna happen at the Supreme Court? So, you know, that's that's the question. Like, do we really need to start thinking about this road in terms of a possible RV park in Gulf Park Estates? That's that's, I think, a very serious, a serious question needs to be arisen. Do we need to make the road a little bit different to accommodate this this type of traffic? Do we not, those are design calculations that I think need to be reviewed and addressed.
Right, if you wanna get some type of digital of the plans, I think we could probably make something like that happen for you, so you can look at them.
Okay.
But we we aren't gonna be able to go through and hash out all of that here.
Understand that, understand that. Also, was a road traffic study done on Beachview recently? That's that's been supplied by the county. Like, I've not seen any anything besides the Gulf, that that G G.
Gulf Coast Regional Planning?
Yeah, yeah, I haven't seen a red traffic, an updated red traffic study. Is there, is there any kind of red traffic study for the record at all?
Traffic count's what, nine thousand roughly, somewhere around there?
It's around, the last time, twenty twenty-two, is about nine thousand six.
It may be, MDOT has a map online, and you can look and find. And if a road study has been done on a road, it's generally on their map, on their website, the MDOT state website. It's kinda cumbersome to find it, but it's on there. And you can look on any, almost any road that's ever had a traffic study done on it.
And Gulf Coast Regional Planning, you can get on there, a lot of times they'll have a talk.
Yeah.
I'll answer it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended?
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Taylor. Second by Mr. Cumbest. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, department heads, tax assessor.
All right, good morning, gentlemen. George, did you wanna say anything before I got started or after?
After, definitely.
All right, so what we have here are the requests from all of the companies for this year. Have their requests in their packets there. The first one is from American Bait Works.
So move.
We've got a motion by Mr. Bossarge, second by by Mr. Cumbest. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, the second one is from Ballinger, Mississippi Repair.
By Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, the third is from Ballinger, Mississippi Shipbuilding.
Got a motion by Mr. Morris.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Cumbest. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, the next is from Chan, Mississippi LLC.
Motion by Mr. Cumbest.
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, the next is from Chevron USA.
Motion by Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, the the next one is actually to deny the request from Fast Flow LLC. They just, they bought a piece of property. That's what they're asking on, which doesn't qualify. Just a piece of vacant land.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Cumbest, second by Mr. Bossarge. All, any discussion?
Yeah, explain what happened.
They just bought a piece of property behind them. There there are no improvements, it's just raw land.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, the next is Huntington Ingles.
So move.
Got a motion by Mr., was that Mr. Morris or Taylor? Okay, Mr. Morris.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cumbest. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, we have Oleo X.
So move.
By Mr. Bossarge. Second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next one is a Freeport Warehouse exemption from LGG Industrial. They qualify, the only thing I'd bring to your attention is, we're only talking about about, you know, ten, eleven percent of their total inventory. It's not a very big number, but, you know, it qualifies.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Cumbest, second by Mr. Bossarge. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the last one is a Freeport Warehouse exemption as well from Oleo X, which qualifies.
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
All right, that's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. George, you wanna come up?
Okay, Mr. Freely?
Good morning, Mr. Ross. I know you guys have a full agenda this morning, so I'm gonna be brief. But I've got a responsibility every time we go through this this process as the local granting authority of approval of these exemptions to make sure that we're keeping all of this in context. To those in the room that were listening to this presentation, they might think that these agenda items were about a list of exemptions, and they'd be right. But the fact of the matter is, the context is more over the fact of the matter being that what you just oversaw was almost one hundred and seventy-five million dollars of new capital investments in our community. There's not a community, there's not a county in the state of Mississippi that would love to be having this conversation here this morning. And also point out that the fact of the matter is, you focus less on those companies and more on your policy. And it is a good policy. It outlines a good, fair, equitable business relationship between this community, the granting authority, and our companies. What that list also represents is a diversification of our economy. There were exemption requests for the legacy companies, Chevron and Ingles. But there were also requests from those that are new to our community, American Bait Works, OEM Tier One and Tier Two, Three suppliers to the larger companies in our community. So we're touching all the points. We're doing the right things, and I remind you, none of these things are happening by accident. And the other point that I would like to make before I, to you, before I step away from the podium, as I always remind you, we're being watched, even when we don't know that we're being watched. And in the case of this meeting and this presentation here this morning, there are more than one companies that we have been in conversations with that are considering sizable investments in this community. And I made a call to them on Friday afternoon, and I told them, go into this live stream, watch this Facebook live stream on Monday morning, don't take my word for it anymore. See, experience and watch up close the kind of relationship that the public sector has with the private sector and our corporate community, and see that reflection of what is a true public-private partnership in Jackson County, Mississippi. So sometimes you don't know you're being watched. I can tell you today, in fact, you are being watched. So thank you very much.
Hey, George, on the on the exemption, it's just a small part of the avalorum tax that we exempt. They still pay a certain amount of avalorum tax to the county. So it's not a total tax exemption for all these exemptions. It's a partial with them still paying the county at least fifty percent.
Mr. Bossarge, it is about that public-private partnership. And to your point, there's no such thing as a one hundred percent property tax exemption in Jackson County, Mississippi. Again, your policy, this board as a granting authority, strikes the right balance.
Yes, sir.
For those watching, if they are watching, I mean, I think that your leadership and the way the county interacts in setting a clear, concise way that if you meet these criteria and come to Jackson County, you're, you don't have to worry about whether the exemption is gonna be granted or not, because the wind's blowing a different way. It's a consistent, we've always done it, and we're gonna continue to do it. And that's why we've got a hundred and seventy-five million dollars in new investments in a regular meeting, at the beginning of a regular year.
No better way than to hear these people, hear that from the president of this board. Thank you, absolutely.
Thank you, George.
Hey, Mr. President, our devotion is here. Dr. Mike Barnett of the First Baptist Church of Ocean Springs. I know you'll wanna hear from him, because he's very inspirational, that's why I was willing to wait on him. So, Dr. Mike, floor is yours.
First of all, I wanna distribute something to you guys. I don't know if y'all can receive gifts. If not, you give me a hundred dollars for these four. I apologize to the board and to those here for my lateness, there's no excuse for it. Except my ignorance, I thought we began at ten. So I apologize, but thank you for having me come. Should've known better, because last time it was nine.
Apparently you didn't check with Tracy this morning. Now, that's, that's what happened.
I did not, because I was sure I'd be correct if I had. Well, we have a full program, so we begin. Solomon, the second king of Israel, wrote three books. When he was a young man, he wrote the Song of Solomon. He was in love, and he was looking forward to his life. When he was a Middle Ages man, he wrote the Book of Proverbs, which you have in your hand. And he was looking around, his children were coming of age, and he wanted to grant to them a great wisdom. When he was an old man, he wrote the Book of Ecclesiastes, where he expressed his sins and his regrets, trying to help the young people of his nation not make the mistakes that he made. And so I wanna focus just this morning on the Book of Proverbs. Proverbs is in the section of the Old Testament, the Hebrew Old Testament, that is referred to by the Hebrew as the Writings. And the writings are a number of books for the Lamentations, Job, Psalms, that teach us how to live in a covenant with God. And Proverbs tells us how to encounter and live well in the everyday encounters of life. Everyday people, how to deal with, what kind of people are out there. Job, on the other hand, the Book of Job is about how to experience the extraordinary situations of life and how to please God in both. And so Proverbs has thirty-one chapters. There's thirty-one days in most of the months of the year, minus three, I believe. And you could take Proverbs, chapter one, on July first and read it. Proverbs, chapter two, on July second and read it. I've been doing that for over thirty years. And it has helped me stay in the ministry for forty years. It has helped me deal with people and understand people. It has helped me in my own personal life, as I've read about the different encounters and the different types of people in the Book of Proverbs. And so I brought you a gift today that we give out, my wife and I give out to people, and hope that you would start that habit today. You still have time to read Proverbs, chapter one. And so I wanna just highlight a couple of things for you. First of all, the purpose of the Book of Proverbs, he says, is to know wisdom and instruction and to perceive the words of understanding. Wisdom is skill in living. That's what wisdom means. There's the world's wisdom, there's God's wisdom, there's our own wisdom. But the greatest skill, of course, is God's wisdom that he grants to you, and as you gain it through insight from scripture and the experiences he brings your way. So wisdom is skill in learning or living. And then instruction is able, the ability to apply knowledge into wisdom, to take what you know and apply it in wisdom and dealing with people and life situations. Understanding is taking wisdom and instruction and having great discernment. The word understanding, Mr. Fulton, comes from the word between. And it means to decide between this or to decide between that. To have discernment is what we would say in two thousand twenty-four in Mississippi, to have discernment. And so that's the purpose of Proverbs. And if you get it in your mind and in your brain and in your thinking, you can have wisdom, you can have instruction, and you can have understanding. And then he goes on to say and tells us what a wise man will do. He says, "A wise man will hear and will increase learning, and a man of understanding shall attain unto wise counsels, to understand the proverb and the interpretation, the words of the wise and their dark sayings." So he says, "A wise man, first of all, listens. A wise man, second of all, learns." And the third thing he says is, "A wise man links up with others who have wisdom, perhaps wisdom where he's lacking." You know, we have five men that we elect in our county. We don't have one, we have five. And hopefully, where one is strong, another one may be weak, and that one who is strong can help him in his weakness and his deficiencies. And the one who is deficient can gain from the one who is strong in different areas. So all of you have your strengths, and all of us have our weaknesses. And hopefully, we will link up in terms of wisdom with each other. Proverbs, chapter one, also defines different kinds of people, the basically four different kinds of people. He talks about the simple. In the Book of Proverbs, the word simple doesn't mean without intellect, it means empty. Everybody is born empty, it's gotta be filled with something. I think y'all agree with that. Then he talks about the scorned. When our kids grow up, they get to that, those adolescent years where they kind of roll their eyes in the back of their head when we tell them to do something, and they talk back, and they're scorners. It was James Docson who said, "When a kid reaches adolescence, put him in a box, drill holes in it, and put the lid on the box. And then when he becomes a teenager, lo and behold." But that's a scorned. And hopefully, the scorned will grow out of that. And with good discipline, he'll grow out of that, and he'll become a wise person. But there's another type of person that the Book of Proverbs teaches is about, the overall type, and that is a fool. Somebody who will not listen, somebody who will not learn, and somebody who will not link up with others who are wise as well. link up with others who are wise as well. They are foolish. You can't hardly tell them anything. I see all hope for the simple in the Book of Proverbs. I see a lot of hope for the scorners in the Book of Proverbs, but there's very little hope for the fool. And a fool doesn't have to be twenty years old, a fool can be sixty years old. And so it's how we develop our habits. It's kind of like this. We have in our high schools, we have our freshmen, we have our sophomore, we have our juniors, and we have our seniors. We all know what a freshman is, they're fresh in that area of life, that season of life. We know what a junior is, they're soon to become a senior, and we know what a senior is. But that word sophomore is a very interesting word. It comes from two Greek words, one sophia, which means to be wise, and the other moros, from where we get our word moron. And so if you are a sophomore in any station of life, whether it's school, college, or whatever, or even here today, you might have some sophomores who are about to make a decision that will lead them in the way of wisdom or in the way of being a moron. They are in that position in life where the decisions they make can take them either way. Proverbs will guide us into making wise decisions and linking up with the right kind of people into the way of wisdom. So I'd encourage all of you, make this a habit in your daily life, read the Book of Proverbs in addition to your regular Bible reading and devotional reading every day, and all of you, I can't afford to give you all a Book of Proverbs, but you can order it on Amazon dot com, and I pray you will. So thank you for the opportunity. Once again, I apologize for being late, it wasn't wise of me, but we're here now, that's pride. Father in heaven, I thank you for our board, I thank you for our county employees and servants who serve us well. There is no better county in the state of Mississippi to live in than Jackson County. I thank you for the good report we heard of the new investment. It sounds like that is something that we just anticipate because of the good work that's done in our county. Bless us now with wisdom from on high. Bless us with unity, bless us with encouragement, bless us with everything that we need to live well, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I knew it'd be worth it.
Yeah, that was worth the wait.
That was worth the wait, yes it was.
Yeah, I've got to reorient myself.
Board attorney.
Ready?
Yeah.
Some months ago, probably last year, I had an occasion to look at the agreements that we have with the cities with regard to the housing of municipal prisoners. We have interlokal's with all four of the cities. All of the interlo locals have slight differences. I would like to eventually get them all looking the same. But one thing that I noticed a few months ago is that Goche's interlocal has expired, Pasca Gula's will expire this fall. I emailed Goche City Manager and Pasca Gula City Manager, advising them of the status of their interlo locals. I met with Josh and Brian, and then met also with the Sheriff's Department regarding these agreements, as to what they should look like going forward, and any changes that we need to make. Excuse me, there are a lot of, there are a lot of minor things that are kind of irrelevant for discussion today. There's two things, I believe, that do need to be discussed. One, the rate for all of these agreements, the daily rate for housing municipal prisoners is thirty-five dollars a day. It's been like that since, at least twelve years, maybe before that. And then the second thing is, this just came up with AG's opinion that came out recently, is how long is a prisoner, a municipal prisoner? So I think, Brian, I'll kind of defer to you, I'll write the agreement however we need to. I understand from meeting with Josh and Brian and the Sheriff's Department that the cost, the actual cost to the county of housing a municipal prisoner per day is maybe in the eighty to ninety dollar range, somewhere in there. And so the rate that we're charging is very low.
What is it now?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Right now, Goche's obviously needs to be updated because theirs has expired, but Pasca Gula's is going to expire in two or three months. Moss Point's is actually almost a perpetual agreement, it runs until canceled, and I think Ocean Springs' agreement doesn't expire for maybe another couple of few years. So again, they all have a little bit different language that doesn't need to be discussed today, it gets kind of into the weeds. The big thing is the daily rate, as well as, this is probably not an issue, how long do you classify a prisoner as a municipal prisoner? I think right now, we're classifying prisoners as municipal prisoners until bound over to the grand jury for a grand jury indictment, potentially. We could classify them as prisoners up until indictment, I believe, based on the latest AG opinion. That would send the cost to the cities through the roof if we did that. But be that as it may, those are the issues. I think in talking with the sheriff, there are some, maybe some issues with, the cities are saving money, I don't want to get outside my lane here, the cities are saving money because we're charging an artificially low rate, using those savings to pay their police more, which is perfectly fine, we all want the police and fire to be paid well, but municipal police are being paid more than sheriff's deputies, which is causing pressure on the Sheriff's Department to raise their rates. So with that, Ryan, I think I've kind of hit the high points, and Josh, I don't know if, I saw Randy Muffly here earlier, but.
Do we know, do we know, like, as far as like the inmates on a daily basis, are roughly half of them city inmates, or is it?
I think I was told, correct me if I'm wrong, that, I remember Pasca Gula, that we're charging per year, right now, at thirty-five a day, what, roughly a hundred and twenty thousand plus or minus a year to house their prisoners? So if we raise the rate to, double it to seventy, which I think is still below what it's costing us, you'd be talking about two hundred and fifty thousand a year, roughly? I don't know, in terms of numbers of prisoners, I don't know that, but I do know.
Really, in the way that you classify them, so if you wait, if they become a county prisoner, if you will, after they go to the grand jury, then where, most of the prisoners there are county prisoners. That timeframe is not very long, it could be a couple of weeks before they, when they enter the jail, to when they go to the grand jury. So in any day, we may have, you know, in the single digits for each city, municipal prisoners, if you will.
Well, how do we, how do we charge till now? Do we wait until they're indicted, or at what point do we transition?
When they're bound, when they're bound over.
So once they're indicted, or once they go to the grand jury, once they get set up and they're on that docket, basically, okay?
That's when they become a county prisoner.
Which could, I mean, like, it could be a week, it could be two weeks, but if you went to indictment, you're talking about, then, then those numbers would be, I mean, it could be as long as a year.
So if you changed it to the indictment and increased the price, it would be a triple or a quadruple for the city?
Right. So if you look at total cost of the county to run ADC, you're talking about nine or ten million bucks. Right now, we get about half a million dollars in reimbursements from the city. So, I mean, you know, that can tell you, I mean, drastically, the county's covers most costs related to the ADC.
And you know, and there's a lot of things that are out there that when you look at the services you receive as a person who lives in a county, you live in a city, you don't realize all the things the county provides, and I think a lot of the boards and mayors don't realize how many things the county provides and doesn't ask, doesn't say anything. They just happen, and everybody's gotten to the point where they expect it, and they don't even know it's happening. And this is a perfect example that could quadruple the cost for cities if the county's not willing to subsidize them.
Well, it really comes out better for the city as well, because they don't have to have their own jail, I mean, they bring their.
It really comes out better both ways, they get it on both ends.
Right.
If we can go up on our fees if they were that far out of line, whether it's seventy or seventy-five, with that timeframe, we do need to nail that down.
Timeframe is pretty short, that where they're a municipal prisoner, and the cost is between eighty and ninety dollars per day per prisoner, on estimate, so. I don't think we have to necessarily make a decision today, but we need to get this done. And there have been, like I said, two sets of meetings to go over the details of this. And I think we need, at some point, relatively soon, because we need to get these done, I think Pasca Gula has made a phone call asking how it's going to impact their budget because of budget times coming up here. So we need to look at how much per day, do we change, how long we classify them as municipal prisoners? I think probably you wouldn't want to do that, because like Josh said, if you go to indictment, you may be talking about a year or more for some prisoners, and that's going to, I mean, quadruple or times two, maybe. I mean, that would really get expensive. But then, the question is, does Goche and Pasca Gula's look the same? I would assume so, but I don't know, I can, I can make those agreements the same. And then you've got Moss Point, and it's, again, kind of on a perpetual cycle until canceled. Ocean Springs runs out in a couple, three years, so we need to decide what to do with those. So whatever guidance the board can give, we can, we can change this relatively quickly, relatively easy, and bring it back up for a final vote whenever you want.
Yeah, I think they should all be the same. I don't know why those differences are there.
Yeah, I don't either, Mr. Combs, it just, I guess, over time, they've expired at different times, maybe.
Some of these, like Jimmy said, ten, ten, twelve years old, one thing we are looking at is a shorter timeframe, just because, you know, there's such a drastic, if you look at what rates and labor and all that was ten years ago, you go, wow, this doubled or tripled your cost, where if you look at this kind of stuff every four years, it won't be, you know.
So far out of line.
So it's a lot of line.
And I think we did hear from the Sheriff's Department, did we not, that if the more expensive it gets, maybe the cities bring less people to the ADC, maybe they write citations instead of arresting them, you know, I'm not a law enforcement expert, Randy, I mean, you know.
Or they could hold them for, you know, hours at their facility until they make bond. And if they're going to bind, there's no sense in them bringing them all the way over here, and then they turn around two hours later and bind out. They, they could keep them at their facility for four, five, six hours if they know they're going to bind out, instead of bringing them all the way over here. And then plus two, we got to remember that, once they're bound over and they go from municipal to us, they're going to be on our dollar until they either plead guilty or found guilty in court, and that could be anywhere from six months to a year, you know, that we're paying the bill on their prison. So, you know, it's a lot of, a lot of moving parts there.
You got, you got medical costs, you got a lot of inmates to come in with a lot of medical issues, you got legal expenses, I mean, there's, there's a lot to it.
Well, can, can a municipality just say, I'm going to keep them? And what would they do? Where would they put them? What is the requirement to house a prisoner or potential prisoner until whatever happens? Can they just say, this room here is now our jail?
Mr. Taylor, I'm assuming, although I don't know, again, I don't see the Sheriff's Department here, that they would have to have their own jails, and probably be accredited by the state in some form or fashion, and have enough jailers to monitor that twenty-four hours a day, and they would keep them as municipal prisoners, I guess, until they're bound over to the grand jury, then they would go to the ADC.
I think one additional cost there, too, is insurance. You know, you have to have separate insurance just for housing prisoners, because that's a totally different venture.
They'd have to be able to provide some type of medical care, too, there'd have to be something provided for them.
I do understand that right now, if they're municipal prisoners during that week to two weeks before the bound over to the grand jury, if they go to a hospital or a doctor's point, for example, that municipality will transport them, and they will be responsible for that charge, that medical charge, so.
Does anyone know, the ADC is relatively new. Back when that was a concept, was there any discussion and anything locked down on what would happen in the future to the municipal prisoners? And probably no one can answer that right now, but is there any documentation from back then on what the intent was going to be?
When Ocean Springs built their police department, they've got, there's a jail there, they did house for a while, and they decided that it wasn't practical for them to basically replicate services that we had, and they decided to send them over here, and they shut that down.
I think, I think a lot of this just goes back into partnerships, you know, we do a lot of things, partner with the cities, cities partner with the county, you know, as long as everybody's working to mutually benefit taxpayers, you know, we work together, and it prevents duplications of services and saves taxpayer dollars. As long as everybody can partner together and be on the same page, it's usually beneficial to everybody.
Have you heard from Goche?
Have not heard from Goche, no. I did hear from Pasca Gula, got just a return email, thank you, and I think Mr. Fulton may have gotten, or somebody got a call from the city of Pasca Gula on what will the rate be so they can factor that into their budget for the next fiscal year.
Okay.
Urgency of it is, you know, we're all going through the budget cycle at the same time, so we, if we're going to make an adjustment, we need to go ahead and try to do that and notify the cities of what that may be. And I'm with Mr. Combs, you know, if we can standardize the agreement so that everybody's under the same terms and conditions, I think that would be ideal.
Oh, I think so, too.
True.
Yeah, makes it much better. Fix these agreements to where they all renew at one time.
Correct.
You know, for sure, because it's sporadic renewal.
And that's how you end up with those different prices, you have different boards on both sides, and they're negotiating the next contract, so it's not going to be the same unless you have a standard already set.
Right, if, I mean, if the board can, can agree maybe on a daily rate, I can take it from there and work with Mr. Fulton and Mr. Eldridge, and we can get these, get these finalized relatively quickly.
I can get out my calculations, I've run it two or three different ways, and let the board review that, and then we can follow back up.
You talking about even on the rates, or?
On the rates, yeah, just to show you kind of what our cost is, and.
If they're only going to be kind of short-term for a couple of weeks, I might have a problem going eighty, you know, because this costs a lot of money, too.
Maybe rough terms, very rough terms, correct me if I'm wrong, four to six hundred thousand dollars, we're probably not recouping, that the county's actually paying for the four cities, maybe a little bit more than that, I mean, depending on the rate.
Yeah.
Or the cost, our cost, true cost of housing.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see them kind of go with the term of the board, because every four years.
Yeah, perfect, yeah, be fine.
Y'all want to make a recommendation before the next meeting, and we vote on it?
We can, like I said, we're between eighty and ninety dollars per prisoner, I would recommend anything in that, in that range.
Or we could put it back on the next agenda, and Mr. Eldridge could, could pass out his data, and if the board, next agenda agrees on that price, then, then I can have the agreement ready to go.
Okay. It'd be fine, sure, that'd work.
All right, finance.
Good morning. I'd like to present the order approving claims docket.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Combs.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bossage. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Present the resolution authorizing interfund loans for the fiscal year-end September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion by Mr. Morris.
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then present the resolution authorizing operating transfers for fiscal year-end September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Bossage. Second by Mr. Combs. Any discussion? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Inventory control.
Good morning. We have a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental sale of a high-water rescue truck to the city of Pass Christian's Fire Department.
So move.
Mr. Morris, all second.
Okay.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Good morning. The item I have before you today is planning.
The item I have before you today is planning commission recommendations for June.
Any highlights on there, Marcus, anything?
Nothing really this month. Pretty straightforward.
Okay, no major shakeups or anything?
No.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Bossarge.
Second.
Second by Mr. Combs. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Road Department.
Good morning. Y'all would, I would like to recap the Beachview Drive project. One, we have received three initial bids for the project. Bottom to top, land construction, and J L B contractors. Low bid was submitted by Top to Bottom Construction LLC. Everybody good so far? The only thing I saw that jumped out at me a little bit was looking at the flowchart from top to bottom, I think bottom to top, was the number of field employees they had. They showing about fifteen field employees and about eight to ten active projects. That was my only issue I saw with that was, do they have the capacity to do the job in the timeframe we've set? Other than that, they've been a sub on the projects with us, several projects with us, no issues. And that's where we're at, on my part.
But this would be their first project as a prime, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Whole lot of difference between a prime and a sub.
Yeah.
Lot of the tops here that I'd like to talk about.
So, Joe, you ready for me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. So I had meetings with Joe and our engineer. And an issue arose that I researched with regard to the qualifying party for bottom to top. And bottom to top does have a board of contractors license for building, construction, heavy construction, and municipal and public works construction. The issue that arose was as to whether or not Mr. Stephen Gunn, who is the qualifying party for bottom to top, fit the requirements of state law and the State Board of Contractors. The bid documents that we sent out, as with, I guess, all bid documents that we send out, require the bidders to be properly licensed, correct, Joe?
That's correct.
And so what we've got in this case is, and I passed out some information based on some research that we've done. As I mentioned, Mr. Gunn is the qualifying party for the contractor, bottom to top, for building, construction, heavy construction, and municipal and public works construction. And they do have a license from the State Board of Contractors for that. The issue that came up is what is the qualifying party supposed to be and do? And reading the State Board of Contractors regulations, which ties into Mississippi law, I'm going to read this. "The qualifying party shall be the owner or responsible managing employee or responsible managing officer or a member of the executive staff who appears in for and takes the examination on behalf of the individual co-partnership of corporations seeking a license, as referred to Mississippi Code annotated 31-313A. The qualifying party is a person who holds the exam scores and must be regularly employed by the certificate holder and actively engaged in the classification of work for which the person qualifies on behalf of the certificate holder." I don't have anything against Mr. Gunn or his qualifications to have passed the exam. The issue comes in when you look at his relationship with the contractor. And that's where the concern is. The, we asked for, the contractor asked for various information from bottom to top construction. One thing was pay stubs, we were provided that. Pay stubs for the final period of 2023 and current pay stubs. And apparently, he is employed with bottom to top, getting paid roughly a hundred dollars a week. And his position with the company is the Director of Marketing and Public Relations. But he is in fact getting paid at the rate of roughly one hundred dollars a week. We asked for the employment agreement with Mr. Gunn and bottom to top. And we were provided with a copy of his agreement dated August 4, 2021, where he is employed in that position that I just mentioned. And he reports to the owner of the company, Mr. Rafio, Joseph Rafio Jr., and the officers of the company, which to me implies that he is not an officer of the company. We asked for the names of other entities for which Mr. Gunn is currently the qualifying party. And we know that he is the qualifying party for a company named Grindstone Togail LLC. He's allowed to be a qualifying party for more than one contractor, up to three. In my opinion, that does not negate the requirement that the qualifying party shall also be the description that I described earlier. The owner, responsible managing employee, responsible managing officer, or a member of the executive staff, et cetera, et cetera. He's also apparently, Mr. Gunn is apparently involved in other employment for other companies that I've put in the material that I've provided to you. When the original documentation was submitted to the county, there was a flowchart that showed the different employees. And Mr. Gunn was not included in that flowchart. That was brought to their attention. And another flowchart was provided with his name under the administrative portion with some other names. So I don't know of any bad work that this company does, but I do not see how Mr. Gunn's employment with bottom to top as the Director of Marketing and Public Relations at the salary of a hundred dollars a week and his employment with other companies complies with the statutory requirements and the State Board of Contractors regulations saying that he has to be an owner, responsible managing employee, et cetera, et cetera. The reason for that is that the contractor, the responsible party for the contractor, needs to be involved in the business, needs to be involved in the projects. So issues do not arise, or if an issue does arise, that issue is handled promptly. And I just, based on the information that we have uncovered, I don't see it. I don't see where, despite what the State Board of Contractors has done in giving him a license, I do not see where he meets the requirements of the regulations or the law as being a proper qualifying party for bottom to top construction.
We're already doing work in the county. Y'all just approved earlier a payment for us. It's this particular job that I'm not qualified for because... I'm not going to get into that right now. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I've been a qualifier for over ten years in the state. When Clearwater Solutions took over the city of Gochet, they used my qualification when they first ran the public works. West Jackson County Utility Authority allows my qualifications. I worked for S A. Tanthony for years in this county. I worked for Clearwater Solutions. Now I'm working the bottom to top. There's never been an issue, like I said, y'all just approved us. We're working for the county right now. And so you've got to ask yourself, why would there be an issue on this particular job? That's the question you need to ask yourself.
This is good, I can answer.
That is all on me, 100% on me. It's not on any of these guys, there's no politics involved. I read the law and that's the conclusion I came to.
You're the only person that's ever concluded that.
I'm the only, maybe I'm the only person that's looked at it. I studied it, I did the best I could, I'm the attorney for the board.
I'm part of upper management.
That's not what, that's not what we've been fighting.
You just said that, read what you just read.
That's not what we've been...
Read that again.
I'm not going to argue with you, I'm giving my legal opinion.
We're not arguing in here today, we're going to decide one way or the other.
Okay, we don't know every best, but I've been using this county for a long time. And you've got to ask, why is this particular job? Why is this particular job that I'm not...
This is my opinion.
It's not on these guys, it's my opinion.
I agree it's on your opinion.
You ask why on this particular job because I researched it on this particular job.
So you didn't do your job on the other?
I have not looked at the other jobs, it was not brought to my attention. I can't know every single thing in the county. I know on this particular job, I was asked to look at it, I researched it, my office researched it, and I came to the conclusion.
Who asked me to look at it?
I'm not going to tell you. You think it's funny?
Who was the second place person? That's the question.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to tell you any of my in-office conversations I had with my client. My client's the county and the board of supervisors, so don't ask me...
We've been a little bitter.
Don't, I can assure you one thing, that there was no politics involved, but don't ask me about my conversations down in my office with my client. Not going to tell you.
Thank you for letting me speak, gentlemen.
Do we have a remedy so that we don't have a confusion like this in future cases? So that we make sure that people submit things in a way to where we don't get caught on the back end where there's confusion and question? Because we need to make sure contractors know upfront, this is how they need to produce the paperwork and turn it in on the front end. As long as we have a remedy for that in the future, I think that's the biggest thing.
That's a good question, Mr. Ross. You know, like I said, when, I try to look at, when the agenda comes to me and when the road department has questions, I look at it. I try to look at all the agenda. But I can't peel back the layer of every onion. We need to double the staff of the legal department if we were going to go into that amount of depth on every single issue in this county. It's just too much, too much information, too much volume. When I was asked to look at this particular issue, I looked at it and I researched it. We had conversations with the State Board of Contractors on whether or not we are interpreting this correctly. And I came to my opinion, and that's all I can say. How to stop it in the future, Mr. O'Neil, if you have any suggestions, I'll look at anything anybody asks me to look at.
But this is what the guide is, correct? This is our guide.
Correct.
Yeah.
And again, I have talked to the State Board of Contractors, we've looked at A G. opinions.
Dana, the state has told you...
Hey, we can't, remember now, we've got to keep the meeting in order.
Mr. Ross, I'm Director of Operations for bottom to top construction. Just going to make a couple of clarifications real quick. Mr. Neil brought up fifteen employees, that's incorrect, sir, that's fifteen crews. That's just our forming. Those are the crews, we employ over a hundred people with our company. Probably fifteen utility crews and road crews, regular crews, and two concrete crews. Right now, we're prime contractors on two county projects right now. We hold utility maintenance contracts with the counties, with the cities. Right now, we are prime contractor on over twenty contracts right now throughout the state, all the way along the Gochet, all the way up to Wiggins. We just completed roads by here just now, we have Pearson Street going on, you guys right now. The legality of it, I'm not going to get into that, that's for you guys to decide. I know the qualifications of our company and what we performed in the past. Anybody who knows the owner of our company knows that he stands behind his work. And we do good work and we get done on time. That's all I can say for our company. Excuse me, I've been sick the past couple of days. But we are definitely qualified to perform this project. The equipment we have, we have over sixty pieces of equipment on our fleet, over a hundred people in the field. We're performing now on twenty different projects from utility work to road work to maintenance to emergency work. Anytime there's emergency in the cities, we're getting funded on it. So given our qualifications for the project, I feel that we're more than qualified in this project. And we don't argue the legality of it. Every other county, city down here says that we're qualified and legal to do the work because we have the contracts to do it. So we can argue about it, you guys go back and forth, that's above me. I'm not a lawyer. But I've noted that every other county, every other city down here, we do work. Not once have we ever been questioned on the legality of it. So I'll let you guys make the decision on it, and go above. But I want to make sure that's clear. If you guys have any more questions, we were asked a ton of questions, we've never been asked before. That's what brings the red flags about us. But having said that, I've worked with several people in this room right now, engineers, county workers, whatever. Not once have we ever been questioned in this, in our legality or the capability to do the formal work. So if you guys have any more questions, Mr. Neil, if you need anything else, county, you guys need anything else, let us know. We'll get it for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me mention one more thing.
There was a question that came up about traffic control, correct, Mr. O'Neil? And that information was requested from the company and that information was provided. And it was all good, it was fine. But there was a question about whether or not they could handle traffic control. They had a person that was appropriately certified to do that, so that issue was fine. But in, I have not heard anything negative about the work that they do. All I'm saying is, I don't know that the qualifying party complies with the law. And I've researched it, I've talked to the State Board, and that's the conclusion that I came to.
Just to put no undue stress on you, we do need to decide by July 10th. That'll be ninety days or sixty days on the bid.
So we're nine days out from that date. So if we don't decide today, we'll have to have a special...
A hard meeting.
All right, well, y'all think through, I have a question for Joe that's completely unrelated, but if we want to sit through and determine, do we want to decide today on this or... Is it something we want to ponder?
What's your, what's your, the engineer's recommendation?
I make the decision today if it bottoms up. I take them, I take the low bid today for them. I make the motion for them to take the bid.
For bottom to top?
Bottom to top.
We've got a motion to award bottom to top from Mr. Morris.
Ross seconded it.
Second by Mr. Taylor. Any more discussion? All in favor, I guess?
Let me ask a question. What is it about this gentleman that we don't think makes him qualified to be in that position? If that, does that make sense?
I think what this has gotten into is, and we've had this happen once or twice in the time I've been on the board where there was a technicality in a bid that had no one brought it up, it would have probably never been noticed. But when someone brings it up and someone digs in and finds it, they find out, yeah, this technically doesn't really hit. But it's not saying in any way they're not qualified. And it's not saying in any way that they won't do a good job. It's just they didn't meet that technical term. And that's why I asked that we need to have some resolution in the future so we don't have it. Because these are terrible things to happen when you have a low bid, but they've technically done something that wasn't correct when you dig into the statute. And it wasn't really anything that was their fault or anyone's fault. It's just they didn't know that piece of it. And that's how you get where we are. That's why it's such a tough decision, but that's my take.
Right, right. And I think, Mr. Taylor, to answer your question, I'll go back and say again that the qualifying party has to be the owner, responsible managing employee, responsible managing officer, or a member of the executive staff. responsible managing employee, responsible managing officer, or a member of the executive staff. That person has to be actively engaged in the classification of work for which the person qualifies on behalf of the certificate holder. I, I just, I just don't, based on that definition and the information that, that's been provided to me, I don't see it. Nothing to do with the qualifications of, of their work and what, what their work is. But the qualifying party, in this instance, I don't think meets this definition. And that's, that's my problem. That's, that, that's just my opinion after having looked at it. Maybe it hasn't come up before. There are things that come up from time to time that I look at and say, we need to do it this way, so we're doing it spot-on correct. And, and, and I'll give you that, that advice. This, this is, this is not up to my standards of what is required to fit the definition of a qualifying party.
Okay. And, but does it mean the state, within the state of Mississippi, perhaps many governments are in violation of this technicality that you think is an issue?
Yeah, I don't know that the State Board of Contractors looks at what I looked at, because the State Board did give a license to bottom to top for this work. They are licensed.
Okay.
But I did talk to the State Board as well, and in my conversations with the State Board, they seemed to, it seemed to, they agreed with my assessment of what the law and what the standards are for a qualifying party.
Okay. Can you speculate what might happen if we vote to go ahead and award this to these people? What the State Board might do in retrospect?
Well, I think that if, I think that if, if the job is awarded to bottom to top, then there would be maybe a question as to whether or not there's a valid contract if they don't have a valid qualifying party.
If this is challenged, okay, potentially by one of the other, however many bids they are, uh, does that delay the project? Does that, what happens? I mean, how?
Well, yeah.
Now, this, now this has been called the question. I mean, I get, this is a public.
It could get challenged, it could get challenged either way.
Right.
Either way you go, it could get challenged. We, we, we could be getting in some executive session material.
Right.
Yeah. But it could be challenged either way. If, if you give the job to bottom to top, Jimmy Lane could challenge it. So they're not, they're not, they're not a qualified contractor.
Does anyone off the top of their head, if, if the Lane Company or any others that have bid on this have that same arrangement within their organization?
We are required, if we're gonna look at one contractor, to look at the other as well. We did look at Jimmy Lane as intensively as we looked at, at bottom to top, and I don't see any issues with, with Jimmy Lane.
Is there anyone that can say bottom to top cannot perform well on this contract? If that is, if that's a subjective conclusion, then it might be smart to say we're not gonna give it to, to them.
That's, that's kinda outside my area, Mr. Taylor.
Okay.
I'll allow the engineer and the road manager to opine on that.
They have been a sub on several projects through the road department and no, no problems that I'm aware of.
But this would, this would be their first job as the prime contractor?
Yeah. I'd like to jump in and speak to that. They did mention, they did, uh, Rhodes Bayou was a bolts covert, uh, Gomesa project in Moss Point, and they're currently working on Ryerson Street is also a Gomesa project in Moss Point. That's a lot, much bigger project. It does involve, uh, some traffic control. And I just wanted to say, so far, they've been doing a great job. Uh, no issues with them at all. So they are a prime contractor on at least two of my projects that are, one just finished.
What's the value on those projects?
Uh, the Ryerson contract is just over two million, and the Magnolia Street, uh, crossing was, uh,
Hundred and nine thousand?
Yeah, it was less than five hundred thousand. They're three, I think it was around three hundred something.
Yeah, because it's still going on. But the Rose Valley project, this finish, like you say, we just, uh, just approved to pay them on a last board meeting.
And, and we usually rely on our engineers to, you know, evaluate the bids and make sure that contractors are qualified, that meet all these, uh, requirements. They had the proper state licensing, uh, that they submitted with their bid. So as far as I know, I mean, we didn't have very detailed discussions on that. We typically don't. If it's a normal contractor that's done work in the county before, they have the licenses, then that's usually the checks that are done to, to do it. And as far as I know, that's what was done on these two projects before. Seymour Engineering is the one that's overseeing Ryerson, and Neil Schaefer oversaw the Magnolia Street project.
And we're doing, uh, Bayou, uh, we're doing Bay Avenue at seven hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. That's from the city of Moss Point. They are finishing that up right now, blacktopping it, uh, as we speak.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that project.
Our water project in Moss Point, going East Lawn, Flanders, and Tassau, those projects are over two, three, four. We do projects right now, our projects are ranging anywhere from five hundred thousand dollars to six to seven million dollars.
So I'm not trying to be partial or anything. I just wanted to make sure that y'all were aware that they are for sure a prime contractor on our projects and are doing good work, so.
Maybe, maybe we have a discussion in executive session. I can tell you that, the, and then, then if you want to come out and vote.
Sure.
I can, and Jeff can joke and stick around for that.
And I just wanna say, I mean, if you, you can look at eighty-two different counties and hundreds of cities, and I can show you eighty-two different ways things are done. I mean, so just once this is called into question, it's, it's gotta be looked at, and then the board's gotta make the decision on, I mean, it's nothing personal to any, anybody, but I know it's an important deal.
That's why I said, regardless of what way we go, we need to make sure that, that they understand the structure to go forward, to make sure we don't have this kinda issue ever again.
If you call Dana Jackson who's over the licensing, she'll tell you I'm a qualified qualifier. So, uh, she, she thinks I need to make more money, so if that, if you want me to make more money, I can talk to Mr. Raffield and make more money. I would appreciate that. But that's our business. I'm, you know, you got my tax returns. I'm part of the executive team, whatever. But you guys do what you need to. Thank y'all for letting me speak.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Can we, uh, do we have to just table that, or?
I, I would suggest we, we.
Withdraw the motion in the second?
Withdraw the motion, and then we can go into executive session and just bring it back up when we come out.
I withdraw.
Okay, all right. So we, we, the motion is withdrawn?
Okay.
Hey, Joe, while you're up here, uh, will you explain about where Beachview's going as far as the bridge? Uh, will you give us an update on the bridge?
I was, uh, I met with a.
The bridge repairs.
I met with the third engineer that has come down with Great River last week, kinda called me out of the blue. I met him down there to look at the project. We have a project to shore up the bridge on Beachview Drive, which is deficient at this time. It's gonna take us five or six weeks to do our work, but we have a water and sewer line that is hanging off of the existing bridge. And the first time I contacted it, it was still utility partners, about a week before they swapped hands. And they told me to wait till the new bunch came in. They gave me contacts. That was around late February, early March, I wanna say. And I've been dealing with, uh, Great River representatives. And I say third engineer, and we're kinda hung because we can't move forward until those are relocated temporarily or permanently off the bridge for us to do our work.
And the third engineer showed up Monday, correct?
Yeah, he called, called my daddy on Monday.
The third engineer they've sent out showed up Monday, so we're, we're kinda suspect of that, yeah.
But, uh, we're kinda in a bind. Like I say, we can do our work, but we can't do it with the water and sewer line hanging on the bridge.
Joe, since you're giving updates, I, could you give me an update on Bay Avenue Bridge in Moss Point?
Uh, we're in right-of-way acquisition. We got two parcels to acquire. We're getting title opinions and appraisals done now. Once we get those acquired, we've got some utility relocations, and then we'll be ready for a contract.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, so on Beachview, back to Beachview on this part, oh. So we're staying within the right-of-way that we currently have. We're not, we're not going outside the right-of-way. We're staying in the current right-of-way, correct?
On the road project, yes.
Right, on the road project, correct.
We're staying within the existing right-of-way. We're gonna have a turn lane in the middle, turn bays, sidewalks on the side. It's curb and gutter.
And we are gonna look at trying to do something in the middle lane that would keep people from using it to pass vehicles?
Yes, it'll be striped and signage.
Yeah.
Whatever M U T C D recommends is, it will be up. That's the only thing. We don't have enforcement powers. There's nothing we can do about speeders. Every morning I come down Tucker Road, one of these young drivers passes me in the turn lane, you know, I mean, it's just.
Was there something you can put in the turning lane every a hundred feet or two hundred feet that would obstruct somebody from doing that?
Well, I mean, striping, you put, you put any kind of obstruction, and you kinda open yourself up to a problem. Other than striping and signage, it's about all we can do, uh, at this time. But like I say, the road will go from two lane to three lane. Everything falls within the existing right-of-way.
And, and the plan is to keep traffic flowing on Beachview while the, while the, while the improvements are, are in existence?
Right now, if somebody's gonna make a left-hand turn, everything backs up while they're trying to make a left-hand turn. Now they'll be able to get into a turn lane or a turn bay and make a left-hand turn and allow your traffic to continue to flow.
And then, so during construction, Beachview will still be open? It'll just be, uh?
There'll be constructions on.
Yeah.
Right there. There'll be delays. There'll be delays. And there may be a couple of issues if we run into a utility problem or something, where we may have a day or two, we have to divert them off, but we're not planning on that, if we can help it.
All right, and you got plans and specs online?
Uh, they're not online, but we have.
Let's, let's look at getting them online so that, uh, if anybody wants to look at it, they, they more than welcome to look at it.
I'll get with Monica and see what we can do.
Okay.
Anything else?
Joe?
Yes?
I'm hearing good compliments on the bridge, Graveline Road in Goshay. Thank you very much. Give you a positive statement.
All right, um, action items, no updates, all right? Supervisor items, so we've got a resolution to appoint April McDonald to the Singing River Health System Board of Trustees. Do we have a motion?
I, I have a motion, and I'd like to have a discussion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Cumbus. Discussion?
I, I've heard some chatter in the community. We, the Board of Supervisors, are radically overstating, overstepping our, our, probably our authority and certainly our ethical standards by appointing employees of the county to be trustees of Singing River Health System. I, I would miss, ask Mr. Calmer to give us a rundown on the preparation that we went through for this and these appointments, and are we within the bounds of legality and ethics as far as what we're doing?
To answer the last question first, yes, you're, you're well within your bounds legally and ethically to appoint, um, Ms. McDonald to the Singing River Health System Board of Trustees. Let's, don't forget that the Jackson County is the owner of Singing River Hospital. Just like, um, uh, somebody may own, uh, a controlling interest in a company and wants to put folks that they are comfortable with on that particular board to, um, to, uh, follow the way the majority owner thinks. Y'all own the hospital. When Mr. Fulton was first considered, uh, as a trustee for the hospital, I researched the issue, and my office researched the issue rather extensively. I've got a file that's probably an inch thick of research. I looked at the A.G. opinions. I looked at the ethics opinions. Um, I looked at case law. I looked at, um, the doctrine of incompatible offices that I had never heard of before, and I researched that. I, 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 I got into, uh, the legal theory behind, uh, incompatible offices and other things. And with regard to Mr. Fulton, came to the absolute conclusion that as county administrator, he was, um, uh, perfectly suitable legally and ethically to sit on the, the Board of Trustees. And he's the county administrator. Uh, Ms. McDonald is an employee of the county, uh, in the, in the legal department. She's a special counsel. Uh, she is not the board attorney, not that that would particularly matter, but she's not the board attorney. But the research that we did for Mr. Fulton applies equally, uh, to Ms. McDonald. I did take another look at it when she was first proposed, um, a couple of months ago or so, and came to the conclusion that you're well within your bounds legally and ethically, uh, to appoint her if you so choose. So there, there, uh, you know, there's, in my opinion, uh, if it was an unclear issue that you, we may have to write for an ethics opinion or an A.G. opinion, I don't see it. I see, I see enough clarity where I don't think there's any choice. And, and, and I can assure you, Mr. Taylor, that on these type of public issues especially, uh, I'm gonna look at it very closely because, uh, I wanna make sure that, that you gentlemen don't ever appoint somebody to a board that is legally or ethically, uh, not qualified to sit on that board. So I think you're well within your, your bounds. I've looked at it very closely.
Okay, thank you very much.
And, and it may, on the surface of it, look a little bit odd, a little bit different. But even with Mr. Fulton, with all of his responsibilities in the county, uh, no question, he can sit on the hospital board.
And, and I think it really goes to the, the type of people we expect to employ at the county, because we don't expect Brian to tell us yes or no every single time we wanna hear that answer. We don't expect the road manager. We don't expect the board attorney. In fact, sometimes y'all tell me, no, we can't do something, and aggravate me, but I understand that's why y'all are there. You're supposed to give us that kind of advice to make us do the right thing. And if we don't have good advisors and good people working for us, we're gonna fail, and the hospital's no different.
That's right.
Uh, and I expect them to vote that way on that board, and I have confidence in those folks. And if anyone is concerned about it, that makes me question them.
Yeah, I mean, the, the hospital system is a five, six-hundred-million-dollar business now. And I know this board expects a cer, a certain level of expertise to serve on that board. I mean, that's not a paid position. I may, I may be reimbursed for their expenses, uh, or it's very little. I mean, there is a tremendous amount of work that has to go into that position, and you just don't have people jumping up and down saying, hey, I need to put in this amount of hours for, to be serving on those boards, so, uh, you know.
There's very few out there.
There's very few. I mean, yeah, you can get people to say, yeah, I'll volunteer, but they don't understand the amount of hours, the, I mean, Brian can tell you, just their board packets are thousands, thousands of pages long. So to get what this board expects, they're having to look for another level of expertise than, than, you know, based on the size and the competitions and, and the things you're having to deal with in healthcare right now, so.
Okay, I appreciate everyone's opinion. Thank you.
All right, we've got a motion by Mr. Taylor, a second by Mr. Cumbus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Mr. Cumbus, you've got two.
Yep, I do. Uh, first, I have a resolution accepting the resignation of Mary Ann Goff from the Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College Board of Trustees for Jackson County, and I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Cumbus.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, next, I have a resolution appointing Lucinda, uh, Cindy Elmore to the Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College Board of Trustees for Jackson County. And I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Cumbus. Second by Mr. Bossarge. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Mr. Morris?
Yes, I have a resolution to accept the resignation of Rachel Carpenter from the Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College Board of Trustees of Jackson County.
Except, yeah, motion by Mr. Morris.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bossarge.
Cum.
Was it Cumbus? Okay. All right, Mr. Cumbus. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Mr. Taylor didn't have any?
I have none.
Okay, I have one. I'll make a motion to reappoint Jeffrey Desher to the Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College Board of Trustees.
Sir?
All right, second by Mr. Bossarge. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Bossarge.
Actually have two. First one is a resolution appointing William C. Bunky Boswell, reappointing him to the Gulf Park Estate St. Andrews Fire District Board.
Motion by Mr. Bossarge.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cumbus. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I got one more item. Hey, Derek, you still with us? Come on up front. Hey, so, most of y'all might know, most of y'all.
Might not know.
Benny French retired from Acadian Ambulance Service a month or two ago, and retired fire chief, fire expert here, Derek McCoy, is now taking Benny French's place, so I asked Derek to come here today, and if, for who don't know him, introduce himself for all of us that have been knowing him for a while, we'll put up with him. So there you go. Go ahead, Derek.
Yeah, thanks for having me, and thanks for inviting me. I've reached out to each and every one of you, and most of you, and I'll, I'll be getting with you individually, and just want to sit down with you, see if you have any issues, problems, hey, if you got any compliments, I'll take that too, but, you know, other than that, I don't want to keep you, you know, I, I was sitting back there thinking, man, I thought I was in Ocean Springs for just a minute. Y'all, y'all's meetings are something else, just like what I'm used to, you know, so, hey, you know, that's the county's business, and, you know, I applaud y'all for doing it, I really do, so, thank you very much, and like I said, thank you, Randy.
I'm sure somebody's told you already, you've got some big shoes to fill with Benny, but I'm sure you can do that.
Yeah, he, he for sure, it's something for me to work towards, but you know, the thing is, is, you know, you know, I'm, I'm going to stand here before you and tell you, Acadian ain't a perfect company, you know, and it's, it's really interesting for me to be standing here in this position, to be quite honest with you, because I've spent many years probably being pretty critical of Acadian, and, so, you know, I thought it was very interesting that they, they reached out to me and offered me this position, and, you know, I, I'm glad they did, to be honest with you, and, because there is some things that I would like to work towards, and, and, you know, I ain't going to say fix, but improve, how about that? And, so, you know, I'm thankful, I had a good career in the fire service, but, you know, it was time, it was time for me to go to the second phase of my life, and, and here I am, standing before you today, so, if y'all need anything at all, please don't hesitate to contact me, if you have any issues at all in your areas, please don't hesitate to contact, and let me know, if I don't have an answer for you, I'll certainly get it and get it to you in a timely manner, so, thanks again.
Looking forward to it, Derek.
Hey, a quick compliment, I'll say, I think they, I don't think they could have picked a better person to fill that role, because you will question them, and you will hold them accountable, and you'll make them do the right thing, so you'll, you'll be a great asset for that company.
Yeah.
So we appreciate you as a fireman and as an Acadian employee now.
I hope so, you know, they have a fairly new president, and he's, he's a young guy, and, and I've got to meet him, and, but I, but I'll tell you this, what, what really got me excited about it was, I've met with a bunch of them, you know, and I met with two older gentlemen combined, they've been with the company for over eighty years, and they were just as passionate that day as I imagined they was the day that they hired on, and I was thinking, man, if this, this new guy come in, and he's got these two older gentlemen fired up as good as they have, he's got to be doing something right, so it kind of got me excited and got me on board, and, thinking about all the possibilities, you know, that I can be a part of there, so, that being said, hey, thank y'all.
Thank you, Eric.
All right.
Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Did we consider? The work session, item fifteen, that was scheduled for ten-thirty and then eleven-thirty, should we consider doing those before we go into executive session?
Let's.
Nope.
We can't?
Nope.
If you want. I was considering places, we can talk about it in executive session, our time sets as well.
Okay, all right, so do we have a motion to go into closed determination?
Um, Mr. Ross, can, can somebody make a motion to amend the agenda on executive session to add the Beachview Drive project that we've been discussing?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Cumbus, second by Mr. Morris, any discussion?
Also, Singing River Hospital System.
Yeah, I'm sorry, right, Singing River Hospital, I think, well, I may have made that, or Singing River Hospital Strategic Discussions.
I think you did. I believe you did.
All right, yeah, I think you did earlier.
Yep.
We got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And Mr. Ross, we have, we have four issues, Gulf Beach Construction versus Jackson County, that's a litigation matter, litigation, Singing River Services, that's Jackson County versus George County, Singing River Hospital, Health Systems, Strategic Business Discussions, and a discussion regarding the legal issues involving the Beachview Drive project and the contractors that have submitted bids.
All right, we have a motion to go into closed determination to see if there's sufficient evidence for an executive session.
So move.
We've got a motion by Mr. Morris.
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we can move back, unless there's somebody, there's no one in there else.
Let me check and see the.